All right, we have a quorum. If you'd rise, take your hats off. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, a pretty nice crowd out here tonight. Thank you all for coming. We have approval of the minutes from August 8th.
To approve.
Have we got a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second.
I have a second.
You could third it if you'd like. Third, duly noted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, first up is the Library Board appointment. Mr. Akin.
The council's received communication from Danville Public Library that the position of Board Member for Ann Marie Fallon has been completed in his first term. They would like to recommend to the council the reappointment of Ann Marie.
All right. Is Ann Marie here tonight? Okay.
Ready for a motion.
What are the wishes of the council?
I move we approve the reappointment of Ann Marie Fallon on the Library Board.
All right, I've got a motion to reappoint. Do I have a second? I've got a second by Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Ann Marie is reappointed.
Mike, I need to know the beginning start of her term, if anybody knows that, and the ending, and if it's a full year term, four-year term. Do you know, Gary?
It hasn't, it's not stated in the petition.
Okay.
Completed the first term on the 7th or something.
Okay.
On the 7th, so it was a four-year term, 2014.
Thank you.
Okay, that was easy enough. Request for a road closure, Jeremiah Johnson. I'm sorry, I pictured you with...
Yeah, much longer hair. I've shaved.
A little bit, a little bit longer hair. How are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Great, thank you.
First, thank you all for your time to hear this and your consideration. We, Danville Regional Rehabilitation over on Meadow Drive, 255 Meadow Drive, want to request to close Meadow Drive from Tradition up to Colonial for a half an hour on Thursday, August 23rd, from 2:30 to 3 o'clock, for the purpose of shooting a video. We have been challenged by Brownsburg Meadows, who shot a, well, it's called a Kiki Challenge or In My Feelings Challenge video, and we, hoping to do that safely, would like to close the road down and shoot that from our bus with our staff and residents.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Are you going to shoot a PR video? You say you're going to shoot a video?
Yes, we're going to film, it's called the In My Feelings Challenge. I don't know if you've seen it, people are walking beside a moving vehicle and dancing. Other facilities around the area have done it with their residents and their staff members. We're planning to participate in that.
Do you have any movie stars coming?
We do not. Well, the Colts Cheerleaders will be present, so, two of them, not the whole team, unfortunately. And we'd love for the involvement of the local police and firemen. We have, well, made them aware, at least.
Okay. Have you checked with the Police and Fire Department and the Street Department about this?
Street Department, no. I did speak with the...
I'm getting a thumbs up for mine. Superintendent right now, so, that's always good.
I did speak with the Police Department, who felt, yeah, well, any improvement to our unity as a community and, you know, positive publicity as a community would be great.
On the street closures, are you going to need the police to help direct during that half hour?
That half hour...
Not the music video. They may be quite tempted.
Some choreography maybe. That half hour does not have heavy traffic on there, and it's easily rerouted down Colonial, Old Farm, across Traditions. It's maybe a sign, but we could honestly provide what's needed if required.
I think between our Street Department and Police Department, we can probably have that taken care of with no problem. Great?
That'd be great, thank you.
Chief Morgan, any problem with this? Great. What's the pleasure of the council? Shall we block this road off for a half an hour so they can dance next to a vehicle? Make history?
Go ahead.
I think it's a good thing.
It is a challenge.
You're all welcome to be in this video.
As much as I'd like to, I'll bring my students down.
So you're going to say starring Jeremiah Johnson?
Yes. Can't put Robert Redford under there.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I make a motion, we approve the street closure, so they can shoot their video on the listed time and date, which I don't see.
It's August 23rd, Thursday, from 2:30 to 3:00 on Meadow Drive between Tradition and Colonial.
Perfect.
Second.
I've got a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Film away, I hope it's drive for you.
Thank you.
Oh, what happens if it rains? Do you have a rain date? Or are you going to do it in the rain?
I hope it doesn't rain.
Hey.
I do not have a rain key.
That's all right. It's always sunny in Danville. All right, Hamilton Centers, Mr. Brock Low, Law? Am I saying that correctly?
Low.
Low? Thank you. How you doing?
All right.
Good.
Evening, Mr. Akin, Town Council. Sorry if I have some materials here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening. So, my name is Brock Low, and I work for the Hamilton Center, and I'm here tonight to request a letter of support from Mr. Akin and the Town Council in our latest endeavor to serve, better serve, the people of Hendricks County. So the Hamilton Center is Community Mental Health Center. We opened in 1971 in Terre Haute, Indiana, which is where our corporate office is located. We have 10, we serve 10 counties, rather, with satellite offices across western and central Indiana, and Hendricks is one of those counties. We've had a presence here for over two decades, and an office here since 2006, employing over 30 medical professionals. Being a Community Mental Health Center, we're a nonprofit, and we serve people dealing with mental illness and addiction diagnoses, and we do not turn people away. That's in our title and part of community. Regardless of pay source, we find ways to serve people. So the state has announced that they're going to be providing nine new opioid treatment licenses in 10 different counties, and they have identified Hendricks as one of those counties. And we did this process last fiscal year in Terre Haute, Indiana, and we successfully opened an opioid treatment program in May, and the reason we were so successful is because we had the backing and the support of community stakeholders like this council. I did a brief presentation right before this with the Police Commissioners and Chief Rainey, so I know some people have heard some of the material in here already. But the opioid epidemic is ravaging our nation. In Indiana, we're up to around two deaths a day related to opioid overdose, specifically in Indiana. Between 2012 and 2016, the number tripled of overdose deaths, and those two deaths a day that I am referencing actually was the end of 2016, so it's closer to three deaths a day now in 2018 in real time. So what the opioid treatment program is that we're proposing to open is a methadone clinic that will provide medication-assisted treatment with therapeutic intervention to consumers and families dealing with addiction, specifically related to opioids. So we go past the state statute in our model of the required therapeutic intervention, using clinicians, therapists, psychologists for the clinical side, as well as case managers for the side that connects consumers to the community, connects them to the resources, connects them to employment. The number of people employed in these opioid treatment programs across the state in total is over 60%. I think it's right around 63%, 65% as a whole. So that's one major benefit of the program. And I wanted to come here today, like I said, to request a letter and to give a chance for some dialogue. We have, the center itself is going to be right next to the location we currently have in Plainfield, off Southfield Drive on 267 north of I-70, and it will serve roughly when we open up to 1,000 consumers. We're looking at the state's numbers and have projected that we'll have around 200 to 250 consumers enrolled in the program within three months of opening. So I wanted to open it up for questions or concerns.
Any questions from the council?
Will there be others seeking this license, or...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And would you, I guess my question comes from the fact is if we have other agencies in our area that would like to, I don't want to preclude them by endorsing them, endorsing you if we don't know if there's other interest as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So...
I understand. So, to my knowledge, there are two other entities that are seeking this license in Hendricks County. There was a conference that you had to attend if you wanted to apply for this license, so we all have an idea of who all was at that conference. We were one of two Community Mental Health Centers. The other entities are for-profit nationwide entities that don't currently have a presence here in Hendricks County. We've received letters already from several Town Councils, the Police Chief, Sheriff Clark, Mark Smith, the Hendricks Drug Court Judge, the Chief Probation Officer, and there has been that concern that you just mentioned raised with dealing with some of those people and some of those entities. And what my response has been is just provide a letter of support to everyone and let the state decide, is what most entities have decided to do.
Thank you. That answers my question.
How soon will this process take place? In other words, if we endorse you, then when does the state award this particular license?
So, last year, the license was due in May, and the clinic was due to be opened past that July, all the way around to next July, so within around 13, 14 months. So if you extrapolate that, the license is due August 24th, and I'm assuming that it will be due to be opened next November. Not this coming November, but the following November. Yes, sir.
How do you pay for it?
Great question. We, so, legislation that created these licenses actually delineated that they will be paid for by Medicaid. That was a new reimbursement model that was used when these licenses were created, with funding from the 21st Century Cures Act. So Medicaid has established a $20 a day rate, charge rate, that includes all the therapeutic intervention, all the case management, the medication, the drug screens, any service that you would receive from this opioid treatment program. Our charge rate is $18 a day if someone was to come in and be paying for it themselves. We would accept private insurance, we have a way of accepting Medicare, and then we have that self-pay option. Being a Community Mental Health Center, we have the option of helping consumers sign up for Medicaid with navigators that were created under the Affordable Care Act. So if anyone comes in and they're qualified to receive Medicaid, we will help them sign up for it. We are also a Medicaid clinic, which means we have access to a tool called presumptive eligibility, which is an instantaneous temporary insurance that if they're eligible, we can sign them up on the computer when they're in our office and print out a piece of paper that is their temporary insurance card that's good for the month that they're in and the end of the next month. That was created so that people that are eligible for Medicaid and HIPAA, while the state's deciding, they will be covered with insurance.
Any other questions? All right. Pleasure of the council. This, like a worthy goal. Would we direct, if this is the wishes of the council, direct Mr. Akin to write up a letter?
Yes.
Well, now that he's mentioned that, you had to attend these conferences, and there's certain eligibility, and we don't have anybody in our market eligible other than that. I have no problem with...
Do you need a vote or just consensus?
I move that we approve writing a letter of support for the Hamilton Center for the opioid treatment program.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Mr. Akin's, utter, get it signed, and I'll get it to you.
All right. All right, thank you, council.
Thank you. Brock, do you feel like you work here?
I feel like I work here.
This is your second presentation.
Yes, yeah, it is. Yes, sir. Thank you, all. My contact information is in that folder if you have any questions or concerns or want to be a part.
Thank you very much. All right, ordinance number 10, 2018, the golf cart use and operation. Mr. Pato, this is your baby.
Well, I think we've come to a good ordinance, and we put a lot of work into it. Phillips and the committee thought about everything, and we put it all down on paper, and it's here today for you to look at. Feel that, unless you think there's something else there, ready to pass.
Chief Rainey, you're comfortable with what this ordinance, the ordinance for the golf carts, you're comfortable with how we put that together?
Yeah, any thoughts? Any more thoughts? Okay, well, we have ordinance number 10, 2018. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion. 10. Make a motion on 10, 2018, golf cart uses and operation in Danville. Do you approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve ordinance number 10, 2018. We have a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion passes. Golf cart away, folks.
You're not allowed to leave here unless you have a golf cart.
I have to go off-roading for that one, I think. All right, Laura, we've got an introduction to ordinance number 14, 2018.
So is that 55 acre parcel?
All right, we have ordinance number 10, 14, dash, 2018, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Danville, Indiana, annexing territory to the Town of Danville, placing the same within the corporate boundaries of Danville, therefore in making the same a part of the Town of Danville. This would be the David N. and Jan A. Coliseum Super voluntary annexation. It has been introduced. We like the product placement there. We did say Danville a lot. It's got to be good for us. All right, on to the highlight. The 2019 budget review. Paige, Umball, Jenny Piercy, let's take us through this. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Great. You have a golf cart? You can drive it here now.
No, I don't. That'd be a long drive back to sign, so I'll take on a golf cart, but...
Off the highways and you have it made.
Right.
Supersubway to be good.
Good evening, Paige Sansone with Umball. You actually have two handouts tonight. One is a pretty thick cash flow report. I'm not going to go through this report in detail. It's just, there's a lot of numbers in here, but I wanted you to have the background information because what I'm going to go through is what I hope is a brief summary through this PowerPoint presentation. And hopefully, we have summarized it pretty well. We were asked, as part of the budget process, to put together three budget scenarios involving pay raises primarily, but there's some other budget things worked into that as well. So if we, these slides are by funds. If we go ahead to the first slide, we kind of like, I hate to come back from here, but I'm a shower, I got to show you all things.
You're fine.
So, this is the general fund, I just want to show you how this is...
Folks on the side, if you want to move around, that's fine. There you go.
Okay, so, I want to show you how each slide is laid out because we really tried to summarize this because of, there was just tons and tons of numbers loading around. First of all, the very top is probably what I, is one of the most important aspects of any budget that we create is, how much are we bringing in in a given year? So in 2019, the estimated receipts for the general fund is $6,246,536. That's a very important number because if someone were to ask me, what budget do we need to have in the general fund to have a balanced budget? That's the number. That is your target budget right there. If you budget greater than that, and you spend greater than your receipts, you're going to use your cash reserves. And that's what we want to try to get away from, is using those cash reserves. So let's look at these different budget scenarios. The first one I have there is just the baseline. Where are we at right now? 2018, I just put 0% increase in baseline. Where are we starting? Just 2018. So in 2018, your budget for the general fund. So then we went on to build in these three different raises. So if you look at 1% raise, it has raises in there, but it also has some other things that I want to note. The 1% raise, it's $6.7 million roughly. The 9.1% increase from current 2018, but again, it doesn't just have raises, it also has two new police officers, two police officers that were moved from the Edit Fund to the General Fund. It has council salary increases, an increase to the town manager's salary, health insurance increases, which we typically see every year, and there were some legal fees that were moved from the Host Fund. So again, we didn't just put in the raise, there's some other things that are naturally coming into this budget. So if there were no raises, there would still be an increase.
So this scenario is everything that was requested when we did the budget workshop.
So with all of that and the raise, we're looking at 9.1%. If we want to do a 2% raise in all of those other items, it would raise it another 0.6%. And then another 1% raise, the 3% would be another 0.6%. So that's how that's working. So how does that match up with our receipts? Well, if we look down here, let's just skip 2018 because that's the current year that we're in. The 1% raise, if you were to actually spend that whole amount, $6.7 million, you would expect to use about $445,000 of your cash reserves. And you can see what 2% and 3% does as well. So what, this budget really is not a sustainable budget. You have cash reserves that you could fund this level of budget for about three years, and then your cash reserves would run out. So these are not sustainable budgets as they are now. That doesn't mean you can't work in raises, we're going to talk about a little bit later. Maybe there could be some other places you can reduce your budget in order to make room for these raises, but just as it's presented, as it stands now, these budget levels are not sustainable into the future. And again, I want to draw you back to, that really is the most important number when it comes to the general fund. What do you have to spend? $6,246,536 really is the number that is your target number. So we'll go on to the next, this is your Economic Development Income Tax Fund. Now, this fund doesn't have any raises associated with it, so we can look at, here's the estimated receipts, about $449,800. That's all local income tax. We do have the number, we think, that it's going to be in 2019. DLGF has provided us. The 2019 budget is actually a decrease from this current year, 2018, because of what I stated just previously, that two police officers were moved from the Edit Fund into the General Fund, so that we can keep that police department together. So this is definitely a fundable budget from now going into the future. In fact, down here, it tells me that you have a surplus, meaning you could fund the $402,600 and still fund another $96,000 if you wanted to, without eating into your cash reserve. So that, there's not an issue with the Economic Development Income Tax Fund. If you had to, you could even move some operating costs into that fund if you wanted to. Park and Rec. So, estimated receipts, again, very important number, $224,833. Again, this one, the Park and Rec has seasonal type of employees, so there aren't any salary increases associated with this budget either, so we just have what was presented for 2019. It's a 13.5% increase. However, it's well within our budgeted receipts, so no issues with this budget as well. Moving on to motor vehicle highway. The estimated receipts, $578,021. Now, this is pretty much, this is a combination of state-distributed, like, gas taxes, and then also the county wheel tax. So the estimates aren't as high as what we thought a year ago when that gas tax passed. There were a lot of estimates coming from the State House saying, oh, you're going to get so much more. Yes, you did get a bump up, but it's not as significant as we thought. But we think this is a pretty good estimate. So you can look here that these, all three of these scenarios are well above that $578. So here, we're going to say that this budget is not sustainable as it is proposed right now because you have cash reserves, but you wouldn't be able to fund it for too many years into the future until you run out of those cash reserves.
Thank you. Motor vehicle highway, wouldn't we?
No. The cash reserves are very important in motor vehicle highway in particular because you want to be able to fund road projects and things and have those monies on hand, especially for grant opportunities as well. So you really want to have at least a minimum 15% cash reserve in all of your operating funds, but in particular, you do not really want to use that cash. Zero. Park non-reverting, we do have some salaried employees that would be paid out, so the raises do impact that. We have an estimate of $355,285 in receipts, and then you can see the scenarios with the 1%, 2%, and the 3%. This isn't too far out of line, but you see that we are utilizing some cash reserves with any of these three scenarios. So this may be a situation where maybe you could potentially find some other item that's perhaps non-essential, that you can cut from the budget in order to help make room for raises, but as it stands, there would be some utilization of some cash reserves in that part. Waste water treatment, so estimated receipts here are $2.1 million. Would appear, from our analysis, that you have some surplus in this fund. So any of these scenarios would definitely work. It's kind of, you know, when we look at local government, unfortunately, we have all these buckets of money that have to stay separate, and we've run into this a lot. We'll see a one fund that's completely healthy, and then other funds that, don't you wish you could utilize some of this? But you just can't because local government, there's so many restrictions, we can't treat it like at home where we can just combine all of our money and utilize it where we need it the most.
Question.
Yes.
So what do we do with the surplus?
Well, a lot of times, especially when it comes to utilities, those surpluses are needed for improvements, capital improvements. And I would imagine there's a pretty good capital improvement plan that you've got. So it's not going to go to waste, but it certainly looks pretty healthy as it is now. Absolutely, it sure does. Yes, bond rating agencies want to see good, strong, healthy cash reserves, which is another good reason why we don't want you to spend down those reserves, because right now, the town is pretty healthy with its cash reserves. It's got some good reserve balances.
When they look at the bonds, when they look at that, do they look at all the buckets or just a few of the buckets?
It depends on what bonds you are issuing. If you are issuing...
I want to issue bonds and only look at our good buckets.
Well, no, I mean, it depends on if you're issuing, like, utility-type of bonds or civil bonds, they'd be looking at the general fund, yeah, or general obligation bonds, so it does depend. But a lot of bond rating agencies nowadays are looking at the whole, you know, all your funds, because if they see one fund slipping or falling behind, they're going to have questions as to what's happening. The next fund is your water fund, and again, this is pretty close. I mean, your estimated revenues are $1,851,000. You can see the different scenarios. This is pretty close. So again, it raises the question, maybe are there other places you can cut within the budget to make room for these raises? Far out of the budget with this. And again, it's a separate bucket of money. Stormwater... Storm water, we have estimated receipts of $365,000. And you can see the different scenarios varying from $320,000 up to $338,000. These are funded within the current receipts, but these positive increases to your cash reserves have been under way. No issues with that fund. CCI Buildings. The primary funding source in this fund is cigarette tax. And all over the state of Indiana, we are seeing a reduction in cigarette tax. I can only assume that not as many people are smoking as once were, but we are seeing a decline in this, just a little bit, slightly. But you can see that you don't get very much. So $18,452. Your budget has been pretty constant throughout the years. You've been budgeting around $20,000. I don't see any issues with this fund, even though you may be spending down a little bit of cash because you've got a pretty good cash balance in there. It's 70% of what you would need for your disbursements. So no issues with this. I guess the most important thing you should know about the CCI Buildings Fund is that it can be used for any municipal purpose. It sounds like it just would be used for capital, but the statute a few years ago, maybe six or seven years ago, changed. So you could really use it for any purpose that you need it. Most municipalities use it for IT stuff, computers, computer maintenance agreements, things of that nature. Q Capital Development. Your estimated receipts, $209,395. This is almost all property tax into this fund. You are at the maximum rate, which is great. That means you're fully utilizing this fund. Your budget scenario for 2019 is a budget of $130,840, which is actually... There was a position that had been funded from here in 2017 and '18 that will not be funded from CCD any longer. Can I ask what position that was?
That was the position that wastewater and public works shared, and they decided jointly that they weren't going to replace that position.
So you have room in this budget? In fact, you could increase this budget by $38,000 if you had the need to do so. The wagering fund. Primary source of revenue in this fund is riverboat wagering tax. And you get the exact same amount every year. It's been like that, I think, for the last years. The legislature keeps saying they're going to change this to where you'll get a lesser share because they want to divert it to other places. That may actually happen, I think, starting in 2022. We're still kind of waiting to see if that'll happen. For now, you get $53,321 in your budget. You've been budgeting about $50,000. So no issues with that fund. Local Rodent Street. This is funded strictly with the gas tax, again, a portion of the gas tax. $163,747. Your budget fits perfectly. Needed to increase your budget by $23,000, $24,000 because you have those funds available.
Page question.
Yes.
Are there expenses that are in the motor vehicle that could be moved over into the local Rodent Street?
Excellent question, and I should have mentioned that, actually. Any type of, anything that's not personal services may be funded out of local Rodent Street. So it is a good idea to look to see if you have materials, especially. That's what I see this fund used most often for, salt, asphalt, other road materials, gravel. But really, any type of service contract can be paid from that as well, and equipment. So certainly, yes, you know, I'm saying we have an extra $23,000, almost $24,000. You could shift costs from MVH to that fund. Absolutely. Parking violation fund. This fund, at least on paper, doesn't look too good. I'll just be honest with you. Okay, so what we're estimating in receipts is $5,500. That's not a whole lot. The budget, though, it's, the fund appears to be budgeted way above. Well, it is. It's budgeted way above the receipt. I don't think, however, you spend as much as is budgeted. So just to know that if you were to try to spend your whole 2018 budget, you would end negative $7,500. So let me say it an easier way. Your 2018 budget is unfunded by $7,500. 2019 budget as proposed is unfunded by $1,000 because that $7,500 is carrying forward. So bottom line is this, just to make it simple, really, if you're only going to get $5,500 in, that should be your budget. You don't have, you don't even have any cash reserves really in this fund either.
We use this, this is a cash-based account. So Chief Franny and I watch the cash and face the parking violations officers. Remember a couple of years ago when we had to transfer funds from the Edit Fund to subsidize this parking violations account? Last year, we cleaned that up and watched it very closely and didn't have to do that. And we're going to be fine. Susan and I talked, we're going to be fine to carry through till the rest of the year. But that is something that this account is solely based on the revenue we've received from parking tickets. So payroll for his position is paid out of that, so it's...
Collection's still an issue with that. Are we collecting the tickets we're writing? And is it that there was a period of time this year where we didn't have a parking violation?
Right. And since we've changed and gone without less collection, we are seeing, we're just starting to see the benefits of partnering with them.
Still running into, I don't know if this is true today, but I seem to recall at some point in time, we had a $25 ticket. Getting $2 or $3 off of that. Wasn't there something about if we had written the ordinance about going through the courts?
Yeah.
It does. It fills, oh my gosh, several buckets. When an ordinance violation or citation, the state gets, the county, everybody gets...
It seems like we get a very small sliver of that pie for the violation that's here.
Right. Now, the parking tickets are different. Ordinance violations on citations are what everybody gets a portion of. The parking violations, the parking tickets, right, right. Unless we have to turn it over to the courts. And then that's when it starts getting divided up as well.
When did Bernard start?
Do you remember, Chief Franny?
I said, we didn't have anybody working. It was just, you were in April. Negative. Two is... If the wire is drawn. $8,000.
Oh, well, this is just showing if you were to spend $24,000, it would be negative. We know that you're not going to spend $24,000. It's basically just showing worst-case scenario. Okay, so the next fund is the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund. And the estimated receipt, $17,654. Your budget fits within that just fine. You've got a pretty good cash reserve in that fund as well. So there's no issues to think about there. Water plant replacement fund. The estimated receipts, $18,950. The budget currently is $60,000. And from what I remember, you've got a pretty good reserve in that fund. So I guess if this is just for capital type of items, I would just watch to make sure that, you know, you make sure that this cash doesn't drop below zero, obviously. Towards the end, I'll have a list of all the ending cash balances. And I'm not certain that that's always spent, like it's budgeted, but I'm not certain it's always spent. So I think it's just a placeholder type of budget. So no real red flags with that. Waste water treatment plant replacement fund. Your budget had some, included some increase in capital outlays, $115,000. Can be funded. There's no issues there. You have a $5,000 surplus with that. The Host Community Agreement. There's various things that come. We're really not that concerned with it unless you, every year, outspend the receipts that come into this fund. One of those things where I think you just utilize it when you need it. So, you know, right now, we're estimating receipts $783,000, budget $1.1. I mean, you can fund it, but you would utilize about $335,000 in cash reserves. So just to put this all together, because I showed you a lot of different numbers, I really want you to see... Now, these are estimated ending cash balances. Because I want you to see that you've got some strong, healthy cash balances. Not all doom and gloom here, but I want you to stay that way. So at the end of 2018, this first column, these are kind of your main operating funds. And these are the ones that have raises involved. So you can see at the end of '18, there's your ending cash, about $3.9 million in total. And then the three different scenarios. So if we went with scenario one, your budget, you would utilize or spend down about $900,000 of your cash. Scenario two, with the 2% raises, you would spend down $55,000 of your cash reserves. And then scenario three, you would spend down about $1 million. So again, when I was talking about before, you know, you can fund even the 3%. But look, if you're spending down $1 million a year, then it's going to take you less than $1 million to eat through this cash reserve. So when we look at raises, it's not can we fund it in 2019? It's can we fund it for the years to come? Because this raises are permanent increases. If you're just saying, hey, we want this one-time capital purchase that's going to use some of our cash reserves, that's fine. Because we know it's a one-time situation. But when you implement raises that are permanent increases, you really want to make sure you can sustain those into the future. And then here's the rest of your funds. These funds didn't have any raises in them. But I wanted you to see what's happening. So at the end of '18, all of the rest of these funds are $3.5 million. And then just the way that they're budgeted as proposed, you would spend down about $20,000 of reserves if you were to spend your budget on these funds. So again, I mean, you've got some good strong cash reserves. How can we maybe keep it that way? Well, unfortunately, because you're a governmental entity, you don't have a lot of options available to you. So there's really two options, budget reductions or find new revenue sources. Those are really the two options. Budget reductions, you might just want to look through your budgets to see if there's any line items that could potentially reduce. There could be some line items in 2018 that you just know you're not going to spend, and maybe you can make some permanent budget reductions to those line items. As far as new revenue sources, again, it's a very tough for local government. You have a little bit of room in your Edit and your Q Capital Development Fund to shift some operating costs. But here's the flip side to that. You probably need those funds for your capital improvements and your capital outlays that you can't fund in your other funds. So I can't hesitate, you know, to do that one just because we want to be able to have some Edit and some Q Capital Development Fund available for those capital improvements you might need. Periodically review charges for services, especially with building permits. And I'm seeing this all over the state. Because our economy is improving, we have a lot more building permits. So are we spending more time with those building permits? If we are, are we charging enough fees to cover the cost of handling all those building permits? We certainly don't want to outprice ourselves to where it's just too expensive. But you might want to compare yourselves to surrounding communities. And I don't know, when was the last time you looked at the cost of your building? That's just an example of a fee that you might look at. Park fees, oftentimes municipalities will take a look at their park and rec fees and make minor adjustments. Again, we don't want to outprice ourselves because we want to have this to be an economical resource to the community. And then I did notice that you are eligible to file what's called a three-year growth levy appeal. Let me just take a minute to explain that. There is a way that you can petition to the state, the Department of Local Government Finance, to permanently increase your maximum levy, your property tax levy because your assessed value over the last three years exceeded the statewide average by 20%. And you do. You're only qualified for about $57,000. If we would want to do that, we can build that into the budget process. I know that's not very much, but we, when we're working on your budget, we look at this every year to see if you're qualified for any appeals. Would increase your overall tax rate, though. That's kind of the downside of that. But it is a way to get a permanent increase to your levy.
Appeal process. DLGF and State House?
Go to the State House any longer. So what we do is the council would just pass a petition to appeal, and we would just send that to DLGF, and the commissioner reviews it on his own. And then just ask some questions. But they also look at cash reserves. And if you have strong cash reserves like this town does, it may be likely that they wouldn't approve your appeal. They want you to justify your needs. So if we come to them and say, hey, we want $57,000, but yet you've got some pretty strong reserves, they may not see that you have that need. But we could certainly help if you...
Can you tell him about the buckets? Looking at the wrong buckets.
Right, right. You don't have it in the bucket that you needed in. That's right. So that concludes my presentation. I think it was much better than going through this, all this detail. But if you're interested in the detail, we've got, we've got a lot of detail in these cash balances. But I thought it was, it was good to show you a comparison of all the scenarios together rather than, this is kind of split scenario by scenario, and it's hard to compare. Any questions?
Yeah, on the, I was looking for forecasted end-of-year balances. Am I missing that? I mean, all I'm seeing is scenarios with the, with the raises incorporated into them.
Right. Well, I think on page, or slide number 19 is where I have the end-of-year cash balance, at least for 2018. I guess you're right, the 1% raises, but we don't, we don't really have a base budget without the raises. I suppose we could come up with that. But yeah, the, I guess the... Definitely.
Well, it seemed to me last year when we were reviewing this and remembering that last year was the first year we started looking at the buckets as opposed to the overall.
Right.
I was thinking we were going to look at pretty good surpluses. And the reality is, we're not seeing those surpluses. So my question is, the effects that are changing for the next year, are they having an effect this year? And we're starting to see that. I'm just trying to understand, because I remember when we were talking about the surpluses for last year, we thought, wow, that'll be great money. We can hire some people and do some things. But the reality is, we don't have those surpluses.
Well, I think in '18, and this is where we kind of get into the detail, but if you look on page three on the detail, and I'm just going to show you an example, because this is the general fund on page three. With the budget that you have currently in the general fund, you do have a surplus. We're just saying that if you move forward to add the raises and some of the other things you added into general, that's what's eating up the surplus. So if you look on page number three, look on line number 41. It's a positive number. What that means is, you're going to be able to fund your budget and increase your cash by $4,000. That is a surplus. A lot of these funds do have that surplus. So you're right, in '18, we do have surpluses through a lot of these funds, if not all. But it's moving on into the future. When you start adding things to your budget and including those raises, that's where we started moving away from those surpluses.
Because we're talking about adding quite a bit next year. I mean, if you think about moving two patrolmen out of Edit and then to the general, our insurance increase is 11.8%. And then if we add the two additional officers, and just a small request from different departments, that all adds up. And that's why you're seeing such a huge difference from where we are now. And, that's why you're seeing such a huge difference from where we are now to the end of 2019.
In fact, I'm going to go on to say that the raises are really just a small, very small portion of this. If we stripped out of the raises, we would still see those deficits because of all the other things that were added to the budget. Raises are really just a small... Saw in the general fund, there were several things that were added. The two police officers, another two from another fund, sorry. Oh, go ahead.
But, to fund one police officer, we estimate that around $78,000 with salary and benefits. So, when you look at taking two out of the edit and moving them back into general, there's $160,000. And then, you double that, and then, if you look at, you know, just bumping, you know, your guys' salary, and, you know, different things like that that we haven't done in years, I mean, we're $400,000 by the time it's all said and done. I mean, that's a lot of money. And, another thing that, and Gary sent out, you know, the highlights Friday of the bullet points, but, you know, for shifting from the host fund, our professional services, our attorney fees, and looking at putting those in general, and I passed that out this evening, where we are year-to-date with that. And so, we looked at practically doubling that for the 2019 budget, so it just all adds up.
Adds up, and when it boils down to this, all you're getting is a 3.4% increase to your property tax levy, and that's your primary funding source. 3.4, that's hardly anything when you, when you look at all the different, when you look at how much things cost and the increase of cost every year, 3.4% just doesn't hurt a piece of that.
Any other questions for Paige or Jenny? Thank you for the presentation. That PowerPoint made this a lot. I mean, it didn't soften a blow any, but it did put it in a nice fashion.
And this week, I can email you guys out our salary spreadsheet that shows the total salaries by departments, and I can send you guys these presentations as well, and any questions that you guys have, because we'll revisit this at the first council meeting in September, and then our public hearing is the second council meeting in September, and final approval is the first meeting in October, which is October the first. So, we have time, next several weeks.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right, let's go through the departments, starting with water. Oh, I'm sorry, collection of fines, procedures for parking tickets, Mr. Arrington, Arrington? Arrington, how you doing?
All right. My name's Chris Arrington, I'm a local business owner, local attorney. Been out here for about nine years now, perhaps on the square, lawyers building with Paul Hadley right there at the corner of Washington. I'm here for two items. The first item is the main reason I'm here, the second item is just kind of collateral to it. With regards to, it's kind of interesting that you were talking about the budgeting of this. I get a lot of tickets, just the way it is. I usually save them to the end of the year and pay them. Here recently, if you look at the handout I gave you guys, it used to be you'd get a letter saying, if you don't pay this, we're going to turn it over to the town ordinance prosecutor, and we're going to file in court. I usually just waited to the end of the year. Regardless, figured one of my colleagues would call me and say, then they'll just tell me to pay it. Within the last 30 days, you guys have actually changed that procedure with that, and now you're sending letters threatening to turn it over to collection, which is, you can't do. It's contrary to law, it's contrary to Indiana Code 342851, it's contrary to due process, the Constitution, and you guys are setting yourself up for a problem going forward if you continue doing that. I'm not saying that as a threat, I'm saying that as an example of Noblesville, the city of Noblesville is now involved in a massive federal class action lawsuit for similar violation of due process on ticket violations. And the reason I want to talk about that today is because sooner or later, I'll forget to pay it, and I'll get turned over to collections, and that'll be a problem. So, basically, I just want to, you can't do that. You should turn it over to your town prosecutor, which I don't think you guys have one at the moment. But, that's something to look into, or it could spiral worse than what it is. I understand, based on the budget, collection is a problem, and attorney's fees really cover the cost of parking tickets, but, I don't know, that's something you're going to have to deal with, but I would just suggest not turning it over to collection until it's been adjudicated, because this isn't technically owed. And honestly, what would happen if you turned it over to collection, the person just still doesn't pay, you're going to blow the statute of limitations, and you won't be able to collect it, because it's a two-year statute on that. So, that's the first item I want to talk, just basically give some free legal advice. The second item is the parking ordinance in general. It's my understanding, based on what a bunch of old dog attorneys have told me, back in the day, this was passed in, I think in 1990, early 90s, because every, all the court staff was parked on the square, and the business owners were not happy because they didn't have a place for their customers to park. It seemed to have worked. Since that time, the town's added a bunch of public parking behind most of the major streets on the square. There's now parking. So, that concern's been somewhat alleviated, and now it seems most of the business owners aren't happy with the parking ordinance, the way it is. If you guys ever want to go sit out on the square, sit in the courthouse lawn, you can watch about every business owner play musical chairs with their cars, because that's what's happening now. Guy I work with, he parks in the grass to avoid this situation, which I don't really like. So, I would just propose, obviously, you guys aren't going to do anything today, but consider, I don't know, modifying the ordinance file, the parking ordinance. You can't get rid of it, because then you have the courthouse staff parking the square again, we're back to where we were. But, there's other alternatives that you guys could consider. One would be, why don't you give all the property owners, I don't know, two or three passes that they could purchase if they want, to then park next to their place of business or place where they live? That would be one alternative, but would probably help your budget there. On the 5,000, you could charge 100, 200 dollars for those parking passes, and that would then, I don't know, bring in more money and make the business owners happy, because every business owner I've talked to on the square, they don't really like the parking ordinances. Obviously, they wouldn't like not having a place for their customers to park either. So, I think there, you've got to balance the two. I mean, I've had customers that have facts. I had to drive an old lady client's car for her, because she had an all-day hearing and couldn't park on the square. That's kind of what you're resulting. Now, you're actually hurting some of our clients. So, that's just a thought. I just asked the council to consider some sort of modification of that, to allow the property owners and/or businesses to have some alternative to where we're not parking two blocks away, to alleviate some of the concern, but still allow the square not to be shut down with a bunch of court staff and us parking to where no one else is. I think that's about all I have. Any questions?
Yes, my question is, if you gave all the business owners around the square two or three passes to park their own cars, where would the merchants' customers park? Because that's what we're trying to, because the reason this was created was because the merchants came to us and said, we can't have any customers, because there's no place to park.
Correct. That was a lot of courthouse staff, first of all. And, I didn't say business owners, I said property owners, because that would alleviate some of that. There's a lot less property owners than there is business owners on the square. And if you look at the square, it won't end up, because, I mean, there's about 125, rough count, of parking spots on the square from where I've counted. A lot of the business owners or property owners would not purchase them. Going from, I mean, you have Kendall Wood there at 36 in Washington, they have parking behind, Frank's have parking behind, Royal Theater isn't really operating during the parking ordinance. Then you have courthouse grounds all the way to our office, Flower Shop, Howard and Lawson, all the way to Comer's office. None of us have parking. We would all probably purchase. Comer's office, they have indoor parking garage behind his office, and then everything on the west side of the square has parking behind. So, really, you're isolating my little corner, and that's the people that would probably purchase it, and, because there, no one else is parking there. 36 on the east, or what's north side, technically, I don't want to get in a legal dispute, but I don't think the town Danville can even enforce their parking, even though they do on that, because that's a state highway. But, most of those people have their own parking behind too, so that's immaterial. So, I think at the end of the day, it wouldn't take up so much space, because that's going to be the last thing I want either, is my clients not being able to park anywhere close to my building, as I can. But, I don't see that occurring, and I mean, I would limit it. Offer the property owner, if you offer every property owner two or three, that's going to equate to, at most, probably 20 to 30 parking spots of 125 that's currently there. It's not going to fill up everything. And honestly, you could charge a decent amount for that privilege, 100, 200 bucks. You have a budget of 5,000, and at 200 dollars times 20, that's going to meet your budget, plus you're still enforcing the parking tickets on top of that. That actually would increase that little bucket of money there, and also make your business owners, property owners on the square, more happy with the current situation.
Are you saying, right now, all these business owners just do, they move their cars around all day?
Correct. We all park there anyways and move our cars, or if you're me, you just don't move and get a ticket.
They're still parking, but they just move their cars.
Correct. And, the parking wasn't enforced. It was January to February of, or, sorry, January to April this year, there was no parking intended. There was no parking enforcement last year for the majority of last year. None of us had problems, there was no complaints. I could always find a parking spot, my clients could always find a parking spot. Obviously, I think if you lifted it, there would be that problem, because I think the courthouse staff would start doing it. Your main concern, honestly, is the courthouse staff. That courthouse employs a lot of people, and if they could park there, they would. They don't because of the parking ordinance. So, you can't just get rid of the car, parking ordinance, but if you did some sort of, hey, if you own property on the square, we're going to allow you a pass or two, that would prevent that situation, but really, wouldn't change anything, because all of us are still parking on the square anyways. We just move our cars every two hours, or we forget and pay a ticket.
So, business owners shouldn't be given that same...
I'd be fine with business owners, but I knew that that was coming, that if you gave all the business owners, because like Greg Erby's business has five people there, one property owner. So, I mean, if you wanted to limit it, I mean, I'd be perfectly fine allocating. If you have a business on the square, you give a pass, I still don't think that fills it up, but if there is a concern there, that you would be giving out more passes than parking spots, you could limit it to two or, give two or three to a property owner, because technically, they own the property, it would, they would have the benefit of it, and there'd be less people claiming they have a business and don't. I'm fine with either way. I don't think either one of them causes problems. I was just trying to limit it to a set number.
I guess my last question is, why don't you feel it's important to pay your parking fees?
I do, I pay them every year. I walk in, give them my...
End of the year?
Yeah.
You know they're due before then, right?
They are. I pay the $5 fund, I give them my license plate number, I write them a check, call a cap, cost of doing business. Basically, I don't have time to come here every week.
Anything else? Thank you very much. We'll take this under advisement, and of course, our town attorney will have to take a look at this and give us, give us their advice, but we thank you for your free, free legal advice, too.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Did I catch everybody this time? Thank you. All right, Water Department. Hi, Jimmy.
Good evening. I only have a couple of things. Tomorrow, we're meeting with Banning Engineering about going over the assessment that we're getting ready to start, that you all approved last council meeting. So, we're going to get, start, see where we want to start and where we want to end, and identify all the 4,000-odd items we've got to look at. And, second of all, we'd sent out, we've been working on getting RFP, or RFQs for our, the overall of the town, where we're at, where we need to be down in the future. And, we've got four from Banning Engineering, Westler Engineering, DLZ and Strand, and I believe myself, Jerry, Chris, probably Laura and Gary, will sit down and review these and come up with a recommendation. Hopefully, I believe...
Jerry, what, fifth September?
Fourth September, yeah. So, we should be able to get, come up with something and, and see where we're at and where we want to go, but part of this, for the planning of the town, is basically what the future holds for the town of Danville, growth, any of that, and see where our existing utilities are at, how much money we need to spend, and basically, how much resource that we have to use for the expansion. So, that has a lot to do with your redevelopment commission and everything. I think when we, once we get this plan set down and all the figures there, kind of like a budget, you know what we got, and that's all you get. So, that's what we've got to work with.
Questions?
Resource. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Jerry?
I provided my report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any problem with the recent rains?
No, sir.
Any questions for Jerry?
Thank you.
All right, Chief Morgan?
Good evening. I've provided you with my monthly report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any. We had 170 runs for the month of July. We've been busy with some PR details. I believe I've emailed all of you on the events that we've been participating in. I am pleased to announce that we concluded a town department-wide food drive today, and I believe we probably gathered more food than we've probably gathered in any of our other food drives. It was a huge success. I can tell you how many totes I have sitting on our conference table right now, but I'll be excited to, when we take that to Shared Blessings, it's going to, it'll be a big donation, so I'm excited about that. In the next couple of months, we're going to be burning down a building on Main Street that the hospital has provided us, that we've been training in for the last several months. As that becomes closer, I'll invite all of you, if you want to come, either just to watch, or we can actually find some gear that you want to fit in and take a look and see what we do inside of a building, and see what a fire's actually like. It's a, I can assure you, it's completely different than what you see on television. I've never been in a fire where the visibility was like they'd have on ladder 49 or backdraft. So, it's pretty impressive. I'd love to have those types of conditions. Lastly, as I reported at the last meeting, I was elected to the Sheriff's Department's Merit Board. I did attend my first meeting. To my surprise, I was elected vice president of the board. They have assured me that that still will not require any additional time on my part, so to take away from my position as far as... I have nothing else, and would obviously stand for questions.
Any questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
If you have any.
President and county council members, before I address five of the items on the statistical sheet that I gave you, I just want to bring to your attention a few of the special details we had during the month of July. We provided security and traffic control during the Fourth of July festivities there at the campus, there at the high school. We also assisted the Indiana Attorney General's office with prescription drug take-back that was conducted there at Kroger. We also assisted Verizon, participated in a back-to-school backpack giveaway here in Danville, provided security for a concert on the square, and we also had two motorcycle fundraising rides that we were asked to assist with traffic control that we did through the town. Something that doesn't happen very often, but the owners of Two Guys Pies and The Beehive donated 50% of the money that's a cost for a protective vest for our K-9 units. They, they had a check written to the town for $431, very much appreciated by myself, as well as the department, but especially our K-9 Officer Sergeant Slayback. During the month, Officer Slayback and K-9 Zeke assisted the Henderson County Sheriff's Department in a traffic stop that resulted in a seizure of 10 pounds of meth from the vehicle. On a training aspect, we had two hours of defensive tactics training for the officers, and also, I... the officers, and also, I sent Colonel Hilton and Corporal Allison to attend a 14-hour class on forensic pathology for investigators, which dealt mainly with autopsies and death investigations. If you would take your attention to the stat sheet on the second page, ones I'd like to bring to your attention, traffic stops. We had 304 traffic stops for the month, which for the year, we have 2,336. We also had 714 total runs. We took 64 reports. We made 40 criminal arrests, and we made three OWI arrests. We have a total of 47 OWI arrests for the year. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief Rennie?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, planning. Okay, storm water. Barry?
Projects and Section 6 at Four Oaks. I know they requested to record the plat. They're still... They haven't even lined, stabilized the streets, no curbs they're in, so they're not quite ready. The addresses weren't posted on the plat either, so they're not quite ready, but they are... They're ready, but they're not ready. So, pretty soon, they'll be wanting some permits for there. I took four new permits for that same subdivision in Section 4. There were two permits in Wexford. There's three storm projects, what I'd consider good-sized projects, left to do this year. One is on Main Street. One is at the park. The structures were dropped off today, so if you get a chance, drive through there and just look at how big those are. They're huge. They're heavy, but they're needed, so... And then there's a project at Tenders Visitors Bureau. We're waiting on some plans there. There's a problem up at Park Ridge and a bunch of other little stuff that's just everyday things. So, those are the big things coming down the pipe, and hopefully, we can get those done relatively quick. Oh, and the building. I was here Saturday working on the chiller portion. It's called a wall unit. It's just an air handler, basically. We were there for 10 hours. We had to remove what's... Basically, it's a radiator. You have to unsolder it from the unit. You take it out back. You spray all the debris off of it. You clean it out. You put it back on, and you find out that that wasn't the problem. But I wasn't running the show. I was actually the one that found the problem. It's a three-way valve that's letting our warm water. It's at the end of the line, not to get too technical, but it's at the end of the line, and once that deadheads, it has to have a return to circulate. So, they're mixing. That's one reason why that, the schoolroom upstairs is not cooling as well as it can. The other problem is, is there's 30 students, 30 computers in that room, and that system was not designed for that kind of heat. So, I think the room's kind of overloaded, but I wanted to bring that up because there'll be some ideas on how to correct that and keep the temperatures up and down when needed. That's it.
Any questions for Barry?
Thank you. Thank you.
Ray, Public Works?
Mr. President, Town Board. This week at the Department of Public Works, we made a change in personnel. I would like to introduce the new foreman to the Department of Public Work, Allen Walker. Moved a little dirt down there this week. We busted up a little bit of concrete. We have done some sidewalks, and I was asked to report on the locations of those sidewalks that we have completed. 292 West Broadway, 337 North Washington, 255 North Washington, 98 East Main, E Street, 438 Rain Tree, 210 West Main, 152 North Indiana, 218, 252, and 294 North Indiana, along with 109 Park Ridge. So, that was the sidewalks that have been on the list for a while that we got caught up this year. We have two or three more. I am working with Jenny on what funds we have left in that account to get two or three more on there and get them completed this year. We have helped Jimmy on two major water main breaks. Sorry, we missed the pool party, but we were in water, too. And the guy that was here before me kind of forgot one thing. Barry is done with 26 catch basins, a major undertaking, and we are paving. Thank you. Any questions?
So, the paving's going well?
Yes.
I can vouch for that. The paving's amazing. I love your street. All the curbing I saw you put in is very professional.
You expect it to be done at the end of the week. That's the date, I think, that was anticipated.
Providing we don't have any more rain, Marcia.
I know. They've worked through it. I mean, they worked all day yesterday, or today and Friday.
They finished the milling process.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the square, we did block off the square, and they are working under stress to be done by fair on the square.
I can tell you that any concerns about moving Farmer's Market were not a problem because they all love it so much, they want to move there permanently.
No.
All right.
Really?
That's what they, that's what they came and told us.
Good.
They felt like more people knew where they were there. It's been there on the west side for how... How many years ago did the Farmer's Market start?
That's a while.
I had that question presented to me today, and I don't have a clue.
The only thing I can think is, when you come to park, there's the Farmer's Market. You've got to go around the back to park over here, but if it's over here, then you can turn right in around the courthouse and park.
Well, I made the comment that the county lot back behind there is a lot more accessible to the public than any lots over to the other side. So, I was just commenting that there was no complaints about moving the Farmer's Market.
Well, I'm glad of that because we worked hard on that move.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Congratulations, Al.
Thank you.
All right, last but certainly not least, parks.
In front of you, you have your council report. Just a couple of things. So, the pool closed for the year. Had a really good year, 20,000 on the upside, but I'm going to be fixing a lot of things with that 20,000. So, it's a good and bad thing. We had a lot of things break down this year. But on the good side, we also hit 20,000 visits, which is 5,000 more than last year. So, that's pretty awesome for a 13-year-old facility. So, that's kind of like, all the things we've been doing are kicking in. Now, we're going to do some makeovers, hopefully, at the end of this year, maybe the beginning of next year, to really kind of up the ambiance and stuff there, make it more... Members will get more services for being a member, too. So, we're going to work on that membership experience. Also, we signed a contract with the Indiana Lions. They're like a D-League, below the D-League basketball team.
Farm team.
Yeah, farm team. That's what they like to call themselves. But they're a member of the ABA, and they're the only team close to Hendricks County, or close to Indianapolis. So, we're teaming up with them. We're making some upgrades in Bostick, and we're hoping that it could be kind of a good thing for the winter. We're going to have some games on Saturdays, and there's some like, there's some decent names in there that played in college, played... Some have played for the pros, at least one or two games. So, it ought to be interesting. It's going to be interesting seeing that old gym because it's really going to come to life.
And they're paying for those improvements.
Yeah, they actually pay for the scoreboard. We're LED Wi-Fi. We've got shot clocks now. We got all kinds of stuff. It's really good partnership. Hopefully, it goes off in the future and becomes a really good partnership, and they flourish because their success is ours. And we also are making a bunch of changes that we've always wanted to do anyways, to kind of, just kind of give us that kick to push forward on some of those things. So, we moved all the speakers in. We have AV, Bluetooth capability now, so we can actually do a lot of the other stuff that we do. You can run it from your phone. We're repainting. We update all the exit signs, a bunch of, just a bunch of general stuff that we've wanted to do. So, the ambiance in there should be really nice come November 1st, when they start. They're going to be doing a press release here in the next two weeks. I believe they're also going to do a police and fire game.
Yeah, September 29th.
Yeah, and so, we're working on exact dates for some stuff, but it should be pretty neat and interesting. And you'll see them working out because part of the package is they get, you know, the fitness center as well. So, there'll be kind of local celebs down in the fitness center. So, that'll be kind of nice as well.
Put a big marquee, Oak Trotters place tonight.
Yeah, exactly. Next year.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's pretty much all I had with that. We've been working on trying to fix a lot of those things and make it just nicer in there. And we're coming, we got about a week or two left, depending on. We're fixing Home Court Advantage, the dip in the floor that's been there for like 40 years. So, we're working on that in the next two weeks. And hopefully, everything will be nice and it goes off great, but I'll report some more on it once we get a little deeper into the season. And then, so, also the speed bumps. We got Chet Skorkin's utilization back. I want to talk to Laura a little bit about it. We'll put together a game plan on what she thinks and what we think we could do at the park to kind of work on that speeding. So, and then, the last thing was, should have fee changes to you. Hopefully, I'm done with them, so maybe next meeting, I'll have to get with Gary and Laura and Jenny and make sure they're okay with everything. And then, we're just doing some increment things and switching some things around to make our fee structure a little bit more solid.
Is pickleball going?
Pickleball's going amazing. With the growth, we also get a lot of wants from the pickleballers. So, we're trying to work on that and build that relationship. But they're, they're actually having a pitch-in at Shelter 1, I believe, in the next week or two. So, yeah.
It's Wednesday.
It's kind of cool. They're like their own club, which is kind of interesting. But there's like anywhere between 30 and 50 there at 9:00 AM.
And they're coming from all over the county.
Yeah, yeah. They really like our facility. So, maybe sometime down the road, we are probably going to look at changing that volleyball area into two more courts, just because we're the only ones with lights, too, which is a really cool option. So, just having those facilities and trying to keep them here is great because, you know, if they're coming from out, they're probably, it's going to be an economic driver as well. You know, they're going to be eaten here, and they're going to be doing all that kind of stuff, too. So, kind of a nice little feature. Plus, ours pop because of the color scheme, and they look, they look awesome. Yeah. We, we got an estimate, and it's $60,000. So, that's half... Yeah, we just don't have the funds. So, those are some of the things that, you know, we got to decide if we're an aquatic center or are we a town. That's, that's the hard thing because in aquatic center, you have to put in new things and you have to really maintain. But you're going to be spending a lot more money than you are going to be bringing in. So, we got to decide, you know, at some point, are we one of these things? You know, is it an economic driver, or is it a, you know, gift kind of to the community? You know, we got to balance those things for sure. But yeah, that's definitely on our mind. That, the play feature, sand filters. We probably have $250,000 upgrades that we have to chip in. And you'll see some of those things pop in, and there's some... We're working on it. So, it's a slow process.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Real quick, public comment. Anything from the public tonight? Nothing? Okay, moving around. Gary?
In support of the budget, we've been in conversation with Dr. Tracy Schaefer. He's, he hasn't met with his full board yet. He's met with them individually. Dates it his gut. The call is that the board would probably approve 14-second SRO for resource officer. We want to meet together as a body, though, before they make a final decision. The other thing that we have is that the lease is up for renewal for upstairs. Schaefer reminded me that we're in this building for a remodel at $1. So, what we want to do is look at putting in carpeting, doing some painting. Here's, Barry is going to be working on giving, getting those numbers to me. So, the next meeting, we should have some... We're looking at increasing the lease with school according to CPI. I think that's what the lease calls for. I have to talk, continue talking about budget and...
Did he happen, did Dr. Schaefer happen to say if his board would be willing, or if he presented to the board that the funding for the, if we get a second SRO would be at the same rate as our current SRO?
Yes.
Good. Anything else? Great. Laura? Kenny? Tom?
Two things here real quick, and then we'll go to the Colts game. Number one, Chief Morgan, thanks for the food drive. I know that was every, all the departments chipping in, but you guys spearheaded that, and I'm sure that the pantry appreciates that. And secondly, if I, if I didn't mention it last time, I don't think I did, Matt Oliphant had to do a lot of quick manipulations to go from an outside event to an inside event, and he did a great job. It was kind of hot and humid, but the forecast was ugly, and I think he made the right call. So, thank you for your efforts, and everybody else, all the police and fire and everybody else involved in that. It was crowded. Oh, yes, the fairgrounds kind of really helped you out. Yeah. And hopefully, next year, or before next year, if we do it again, someone will give lessons to the police and firemen on how to eat a donut on a, on a string without cheating or knocking it on the floor. Claim docket?
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve the claim docket. Do I have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Go Colts.